Good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted by Zoom. And in person, speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely and in person, and the chair may allow for the public to provide, for the public to provide comment. The select will would like to hear public comments, and if there is further action required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending upon the comments, would may, they are able within the confines of the open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, this meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to individual attendees unless otherwise required by law. According to these piece, please be aware that other people may see, be able to see you, so please take care not to screenshot your computer. Anything broadcast may be captured by the recording. The me- meeting materials. All of me, all of the materials for this meeting, except in the executive session materials, our bill will want to board docs, and we recommend the members in public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless the chair notes otherwise. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remark, the chair will down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any common questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For running response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do throw, do, do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comments, after members have spoken, the chair may afford public comments and follow. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once we have a list of all public commentators, I will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Public comments for public hearings will only be accepted in person per open meeting law. And now we will move to the next agenda of the first item on our agenda in public session, which is the pledge allegiance. Everybody can stand and join us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic, for which we stand one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comments. Do we have any public comments in the room this evening? Okay, there are no public comments in the room. Do we have any public comments online this evening? Okay, so I see no public comments. We move on to the next agenda on the uh, next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda, which it's of one item. Would anyone like to make a motion on the one item?
Uh, I'll move to approve the plans for the Benning State Parade actually. You know, I'm sorry, you make a motion, you the real entity though.
I love your consent agenda, item A, as presented already, for digital preemptive approach.
Okay. I mean, this is a, this is an annual event. So we um. You don't usually have too much discussion, but what Greg Wyatt is this noted that the um, Blackwood Community Event?
Yeah, because.
That's the cover, that's the cover, the cost of police detail and or insurance costs or.
Right, do we, did we read that? Was that part of the multiple?
Not, not yet, because it hasn't, because we haven't voted to say yes to the parade.
Okay, so um. All those in favor of the parade, is there any discussion? To all those in favor. Okay, let's do the second motion within the consent agenda.
Uh, move to approve the use of community actlet. So, I'll do the motion, but then I have questions.
Okay.
Move to approve the use of the community events account to support the current personnel for.
Second. Any questions?
Yes. Do we have an estimate as to how much money we're committing to? As far as the detail.
Greg, did you get that?
No, I don't have a number. How many hours?
So many, um, for the hour, hey.
Yeah, so, and I'm just trying to figure how many, so we have like two officers, maybe, and then one leaves the parade, yeah.
That are not on duty, there's probably one that controls the traffic at the end of Sudbury Street and then one down at the uh, at the McDonald's restaurant area.
And then what it's.
And then one at, but usually they have an on duty officer up at the um, at Summer Street.
Yeah, okay, alright, I just wasn't sure how much we're committing to.
There might be one at the end of Walnut, too.
Good question. This, this is.
Probably three cops, three police officers.
Yeah, oh, so we do typically pay for it out of this account?
Yeah, and, and, and sometimes whatever else. Yeah, there's, there's more than granted.
Because it's also GPW plus, it might come in too.
Yeah, because they, they set up there to do for us.
Yeah, but it's.
It's Saturday.
I would still.
Yes, it is.
Would anybody like to grill a witness further?
Alright, well, will we make knocks on Porter Road by then?
Oh, I hope so.
We'll talk about it. I saw.
When you go on Summer Street, past the old school in our space and look down, you could, usually during the day, there's nothing there. There's no fencing there, and then they barricaded back up and down.
I, yeah, I went down yesterday morning and was chatting with one of the guys, because it, now you can look this way. And it looks like they, they just got the sidewalk paving to do, uh, probably a lot more than I can't see, but they were saying hopefully by the end. But they are just the guys who are working on bridge, whether they, no, I don't know.
Alright, so um, any further comments about the um, community events fund being used? Alright, so, all those in favor? Thank you, Kim, and thanks for running the parade again.
Thank you.
You can let me know if one of you would like to speak out for that.
What's the date? What, what day of the week is that?
Saturday, yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll figure that out. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you again for doing that.
Thank you. Right, one to number five with the use of sound property, um, going with Thursday.
Nope, is it this Thursday or is it this Wednesday? Because Thursday is the fifth and Wednesday the fourth.
I'm sorry. I'm pretty sure, I, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that it's tomorrow, but will you have the hour? Well, I just got me.
Alright, so um, Jacob, are you with us?
Hey there, yes, we are.
Hey, how you doing? Hey, what, what actual day is this? Thursday or Wednesday?
Wednesday, tomorrow.
So it's tomorrow, which is Wednesday, Wednesday the fourth.
Wednesday the fourth, yeah. Yeah, and this is, this is our, uh, locations, um, scout, uh, Matt, and I'm Jacob, I'm a producer on the film. And uh, yeah, we are excited about filming at the Fine Arts Theater. We've been talking to Les for a couple of weeks now, and uh, when we discovered the theater, it was like the perfect spot for us. And uh, so yeah, we're really excited to shoot some of our scene in Maynard.
Is this, now, did I, is this the one I read in the only thing, it's because it was this guy's a detective, he's just gonna be watching somebody type of thing, is that, was that you guys?
Yes, exactly, yeah, so, yeah, the, the films are crime comedy, sort of like Big Lebowski or something like that, a Coen Brothers type quirky comedy. And this is just the scene where the character uh, watches, um, watches someone enter the movie theater and follows them in.
No, I, I only asked that question just so I could say thanks for the um, rather thorough explanation of what you were gonna do. Because we don't often get such a thorough explanation.
You're not the same filmmaker that, that we're working down, uh, a few weeks ago, we approved, are you?
Uh, no, no, we, we started production just this past week. Was there a dome that was shooting in Maynard recently?
There was, but I think it was a smaller production.
Got it, got it.
No.
Alright, so um. Alright, does anybody have any further questions for Jacob?
I just want to make sure, because tomorrow, um, I want to thank the police, the feedback from police was to call the special request detail, so you've requested a detail and you're all set for tomorrow?
Yes, yeah, we've, uh, we've requested a detail, uh, we talked to the chief, uh, the deputy chief of police. Um, we have a police detail uh, from three PM to eleven PM tomorrow, when we're gonna be uh, mostly outside, or you know, if outside at all. And um, and yeah, yeah.
And we've, we've been chatting with the police as well about securing um, the street, there, there's six street uh, parking spots right in front of the theater. And that's just so that way we can control, when we film a wide shot, we can control, you know, what vehicles are there. Um, and so uh, we, we've been in, we're, we have that in the works to, to, to have those spots for us.
When Tom Cruise comes into town, is he gonna have uh, protection?
Yeah, I'll have a whole team of bodyguards.
Yeah, right.
Alright, so um. Would anybody like to make a motion regarding the use of Memorial Park?
I can uh, move to approve the use of Memorial Park on Wednesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-three, from three to seven PM by Jacob Medea, pending receipt of current certificate of insurance and contingent of public appearance to all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any further comments? All in favor? Alright, good luck.
Good luck, have fun.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you, you too. Alright, we have an appointment to the Capitol Planning Committee, Jonathan Brett. Good evening. Alright, what's gonna like to make a motion, and then we'll.
I'll move to approve Jonathan Brett's Capitol Planning Committee with the term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Okay, well, um, so thank you for all the information you provided us as well, and um, guess. After that, is there anybody that had any questions for John?
Uh, I, I apologize, but I, so, we're having a little bit of technical difficulty here this evening, so I can't pull up your information. If you mind giving me a quick overview of why do I have the Capitol Planning Committee?
Um, I've been a resident in Maynard since seventy-seven. Um, and I like to put it in the back, it's got its doors only to town. Um, the relative of length. Um, and the original, so like one of the original segments in town. Uh, back in the early, in the nineties, I was on the original charter commission. Um, and also uh, chair of the, the charge by law committee. Uh, and since then, life's gotten away, and now that I'm getting closer to uh, the uh, retirement, and we should, yeah, but close to retirement, I'm not traveling anymore for work. Um, I wanna get back into big town. Uh, I've got MBA, I do have a bio chief, you don't have that, okay, um. MBA, I own my own business now, salt and regulatory, there are default systems. Work with international companies all over the world. So I have a lot of experience with planning and with particularly on the capital side, and my job when I was working with a company, I had to justify capital expenditure by a lot of experience in there, but uh, I'd like to get back, back to Maynard. And I'll, I'll note that uh, John Markin sent a note over today, he had met with John Prince and then uh, has met with him and talked with him and endorses him, and then, did you have a chance to meet the other members? Yeah, yes, well, actually, I don't have a lot of meeting, very good. A good endorsement from the current members of the.
Okay, um, any, any other questions, comments?
Uh, not so much a question, but I had an opportunity to meet with Jonathan, um, just a couple of days ago, on Sunday morning, when we were um, putting on a presentation about uh, you know, trying to inform people in the town about the new school project. And uh, clearly, you know, very sharp and involved, and um, so, pleasure to meet you then.
Okay, um, any, David?
No.
Okay, um, I guess all those in favor? We thank you for volunteering.
Yes, I'm forward to it. This is really, they, over the last few years, they have really taken the Capitol Planning Committee and, and we're, we're, I mean, I'm treating myself, but I mean, other people also, just so impressed with what they've done and the, that all they've come up with.
Thank you very much.
So you need to get sworn in and all that.
I'm, I'm, I'm treating the. Alright, so we're at the um, into the goals, as we've written, we've printed condensed version, thousand and one page.
Yeah, Mr. Eric, so I, he's back from the board last, that meeting. Uh, the board had a couple of things we were interested in, just to identify um, references to the master plan, so I, I did that for more part. And um, change some of the wording to make more action oriented, so evaluate if woman, that's good. Um, but largely, this is the same document, the four uh, main goals. And uh, and so, like, action items.
Okay. Anybody have any comments about the document presented this evening?
Oh, we passed Maynard.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
And just one point stood out for me in the uh, the last goal, the um, supporting financial capital planning to meet the long-term need to the community. I'm not sure if it's worth putting any mention in there about our need to respond to climate change issues. We've only got to look at Lemonster and other towns in the region, um, to see that it's a very pressing need. And I mean, I think we'd be doing this anyway, but whether it's worthwhile uh, actually focusing, it's not focusing, but, but placing it in this document. To provide emphasis for that need.
So, it's fine, uh, climate change in relationship specifically to capital planning?
Right, as I, I mean.
Versus climate change considerations globally or, or.
Well, I'm, I, I can only believe that in the long term, it's going to affect capital plan, it was tied in with uh, stormwater issues. Um, and energy issues.
I certainly don't object to that idea, I just, I, I don't know that, are we, would, would that be kind of you know, would, would be some redundancy with the um, the main and green communities and the sustainability committee, and, and I mean, you know, those folks are already kind of in place in, you know, um, offering us advice.
Well, I think we can work with those, with those organizations.
I, I, I just, I just, you know, just, I think if that, if that is there, I think that's, that's part of that same conversation is, you know, that we are, you know, to work with those groups, and to accept feedback from those groups as, as needed and as necessary.
So maybe, thinking out loud, um, similar to the final bullet of the strategizing partnership of appropriate public bodies, the forecasting that's the thing. We could also do a strategize impartial partnership. We, we, we would again, with appropriate public bodies or whatever, for adapting or, or preparation or.
Maybe investments.
Investments.
It's a consideration of party, but so.
Right, exactly.
The MVP program.
It's wider and as broad as you want to make the final bullet point, kind of, kind of covers it.
Yeah, that's.
In a sense.
This is, I mean, but again, this document is helpful in many ways, so, so um, it helps departments sort of like strategize, kind of, through what they're gonna do. I mean, I understand we've already made investments towards having cruises, but it's a good example. And it, and it also sort of indicates that all the departments, probably, this is not even the majority of it, right? So if someone were to, just like the master plan, several times to propose whatever initiative. I think what would be a good advocacy is going for the board is interested, and then if they can tie it with that, that's only for us into this year, that's what they would do. It's, so, it's not a bad idea, like this, this information particularly, I could maybe, if the capital planning committee, if, if the capital planning committee wants within their evaluation of the submitted request says, oh yeah, you check that off, you get an extra point. So, it, it could be, I'm trying to sort of like, make it tangible, how, how we would be actually going to go there.
I also, I would also hesitate to handcuff ourselves to it though, too, because there is a financial cost to, for certain things as well, so I don't want to um, I don't want to be doing something that then says, alright, well then that's we have to do it because the select board says it's a goal now. Because it could very well be that, yes, it is a goal of ours to reach, but we have other considerations in mind as well, so I that's why I think that some of these are a little bit fluid or a little bit, not as, not as concrete as people may want, but I think that's by design, because you have to be able to adapt with the individual situations.
Right, yeah, I think that's true of most of these goals.
Yeah, yeah, you're trying to write the right bounds.
Right.
Because you don't want to fail the goals, but you, but you, you, you want to have action, so, yeah. I think that's acceptable, it's not as you know, like some of the goals are a little bit more, I mean, some of the tasks is, there's a little more stuff into the, the water, manner that, there's that be. Why not that, if that's the sort of consensus of the board, I think that.
Sure, uh, will anybody object to that? No, okay.
Would you, would y'all like me to come back, or would you like to uh, approve this as amended, that, that addition?
Well, what's the language that you're gonna add?
Uh, I, I tried it all.
I mean, it's not, I, I think we can certainly do, add the language and then bring it back and just vote on it again.
Okay, I knew that, that's a tease.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, thanks, Mike. Alright, um, community electricity aggregation.
We're, we're, I'm, I'm gonna look through Sally Warner, um, particularly the table.
Yeah, hi everyone, um, so I'm here representing the Sustainability Committee, my name is Sally Warner. Um, oh, do I have to give my address? Ten Damar Street, um. Uh, so essentially what this is, is that um, right now it takes up to three years for the Department of Public Utilities to approve new applications for um, for community aggregation. And so, this is a proposal for the House Legislature, um, to essentially mandate that that process be sped up to be, um, so approvals happen within ninety days. Um, we've been working with um, Paul Gromer from um, Peregrine Energy, Energy Mass, um, Mass Power Choice, and so they have drafted this letter of support, they have over ninety municipalities who have signed on to this letter already in support of the legislation, and so he has asked if Maynard would be willing to be one of the additional towns to sign on to the letter.
Good, okay, could, could you, um, you or, you or Paul, because I see Paul's here as well, could, one of you give us for those who don't know what the um, community electricity aggregation is, give us the sixty-second quick recap of exactly what we're asking for?
Yeah, so, um.
What we're supporting, I guess, is what is the correct terminology.
Yeah, so, uh, community aggregation in a very broad sense, essentially, um, residents from the town would buy energy in bulk, um, and uh, so it's, energy would still be delivered by ever source. But we would be, um, uh, by, by buying it in bulk, it provides more stability in costs. Although cost savings can't be guaranteed, um, it also gives uh, residents the option to um, pay for greener energy choices. And there's over two hundred municipalities in Massachusetts who already have community aggregation. Um, so that's, that's what community aggregation is in the broadest sense. Um, so this, the select board has already approved for the sustainability to move forward with, with bringing community aggregation to uh, Maynard. Um, so we're in the process of working on this, um, what we're bringing today is just, does Maynard want to sign on to the letter in support of this legislation? So we, we can come to a future select board meeting to present an update about where we're at with bringing community aggregation to Maynard, but yeah, today the topic is just support the letter.
And this is many years ago, probably now seven years ago, maybe a little longer than that. Uh, town meeting voted to support moving forward with um, with aggregation. Um, it was longer than seven years ago, it was probably closer to a decade ago, and um, it sort of fell silently on the vine, um, and never really took any action until a year and a half ago, I would guess, when the Sustainability Committee first sort of became active for us. And it became evident again, when, when somebody on the Sustainability Committee looked at, at the aggregation issue and realized, oh, we've already jumped through one of the steps required to get us to where we want to get to. So um, I, I support approving this letter, in, in essence, it doesn't affect us in any way in reality, other than just saying to the state, when the pro, when we're ready to do the process, we want it to be a quicker process, so we can sort of jump on it quicker rather than waiting two years to get, um, to get approved, so I think it makes sense. It's that sort of our direction, that, that's how meeting has directed us to go in.
I'm just curious if there is, so I'm wondering if there's been any feedback regarding um, unintended, unintended consequences of going from a three-year process to a ninety-day process. I feel like there's probably a, a reason that it has taken three years, it's probably inefficiency than whatever, but is there a concern with the fact that now the states will be mandated to turn this around in, in ninety days, something that'll get missed is you know, it, it just, I'm just curious if, if you've heard any feedback about that at all?
Um, I haven't heard much about that, Paul might be able to speak more to that, to your question.
Sure, thank you, um, my name is Paul Gromer, I'm with the consulting firm Mass Power Choice, we're consultants for the town on aggregation. Um, this is a good question about whether ninety days is sufficient or something more like three years is necessary. What I can say there is, is the main thing is that it used to take only ninety days, or sometimes a hundred and twenty days, but the state regularly approved these plans in ninety days, this was three, four years ago. They've approved another hundred of them since, they're all pretty much the same, but the state's just taken longer and longer and longer and longer to do it. Um, I think it's largely been a staffing issue and a priority wish, issue within the Department of Public Utilities. There are many other things that they're required to do within a certain timeline, and so the things that have a mandated timeline tend to get the priority, so requiring ninety days here would just bring the Department of Public Utilities back to the length of time they used to take in reviewing these plans.
So basically, if, if this law passes, then they'll have to create the staffing to handle it somehow.
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Um, yes, the state would have to respond to it, and they would have the option, I suppose, they just have to rule in ninety days, so if they felt they didn't have sufficient time to approve, you know, they could always reject a plan if they, if, you know, if it weren't sufficient, or if they felt there was not enough time, but I, I don't think really the issue with the state is that they need more time to do it, it's, it doesn't take that long, and they approved a hundred and fifty of them already, so it's really more of a matter of prioritizing and, and getting to it rather than putting it off because other things seem more pressing.
Thank you. Alright, um, does anybody have any further questions for you, Sally or Paul?
Uh, I have one question. Um, is there, are there any cases out there of towns uh, grouping together, um, to make um, uh, aggregation groups at all?
Regional aggregation?
Yeah.
Ye- yes, um, uh, there are two examples of this. One, there's a group aggregation on Cape Cod. With twenty, I think twenty twenty-one towns on the Cape that have grouped together, and they they were the first aggregation in the state, and they did it about. Fifteen years ago, and they've been a group. There hasn't been any group since. Um, there is one that's being formed now in the Amherst North Hampton area. They're they're forming a group. Otherwise, all of the aggregations, and as Sally said, there are a hundred and fifty plus of them now, have gone forward as individual communities. Um, and it's arranged from great big communities like, you know, Boston has one, Worcester has one. Um, and then much smaller communities do as well, smaller than than Maynard, much smaller than Maynard have it. Um. What may be behind your question is, do towns get better pricing if they're a great big group rather than going individually? Um, and that's a reasonable assumption because that's certainly true with most things that you buy in bulk, you get a lower price. Um, that isn't so much true in electricity. With electricity, it's more the nature of your electricity use rather than the volume. Once you're the size of a town, a town going out for an aggregation typically will get better pricing than an individual. But small towns versus big towns, the difference isn't so much driven by size, and it's certainly the case um. We've been involved in a lot of communities that have purchased electricity at the same time as the city of Boston. Um, and much smaller communities typically do as well, or sometimes even a little better than a great big city like Boston does. So it's a, it's a good thing to consider, but there isn't the the price benefit from it that you would you would ordinarily expect, and you would certainly see with regard to other things.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I will move to approve the letter of support regarding. H thirty-eight fifty-two and act supporting electrical load aggregation programs in the Commonwealth as presented. Authorizing use of digital signatures if.
Second.
Are you sure the questions are comments?
Um, may I, may I make just one further comment if I could, just a question? Just for the the letter, I would just need to attach someone's signature to it. So I would, not physically the signature, but it. Will look like a signature block, so it would have to either be the Select Board as a group, the Chair, the Town Administrator, whomever you designate, but if. You could designate someone, that would be very helpful. Thank you. Sorry for interrupt.
Thank you.
Can just use digital signatures.
Yeah, so I can do all of you. Can it be digital, Paul? Can the signature be digital?
Yes, and in fact, it doesn't even need to be a signature. I just need to know whose name to put on there. Because there's so many, there won't be, you know, an actual cursive signature. There'll just be a a list of people who are signing with their. Name, their title, and the name of the community.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, home rule petition, special police officers, number nine on the agenda.
This chair is a little complicated. So um, we were contacted by Republican Folks' Office. That the Committee on Public Service had made a change to the petition that had been approved from. County in twenty twenty-two to the legislature to allow for. Retired officers, police officers, service special officers. So town's approved, went to the. In the course of the bill becoming a law, people. Um, specifically helped three nine three zero, now operate with the special officer in the county mayor. Um, the Committee on Public Services, we'd like to add. There was a little bit of, in in the track changes on board docs, you would see like there's some like uh, yeah, um. Some grammatical changes, but the substantive change, which is what the legislature thinks the board should approve, is adding a sentence. To what, it will be the the main paragraph of of the revised, that's the, the sentence is. No further deduction shall be made for the regular compensation of any special police officer appointed in the act with the chapter thirty-two of the general laws after reaching age thirty-five. And upon retirement, any special police officer's appointment of the Zach Tauris with the superannuation, superannuation retirement allowance equal to that. Which he would have been entitled had they retired at sixty-five. So. In reading, it's like five or six times, and and I look at it over. It doesn't seem to be of any um. Substantial impact to the rest of it. It really just corresponds with the rest of the paragraph saying that the town is so obligated onto the general law for for what it's obligated for retirement. So it seems. It seems acceptable in my, and I would recommend the board to approve this change that the legislators recommending in order to enact the position that was submitted by the county meeting. It's a little, it's a little complicated, but it doesn't have reading and reading agree. It doesn't seem to be of any, doesn't seem to impact the rest. They didn't change any of the rest of the. Of the language from the state from the town, it just added this.
So that sentence basically codifies what we would be doing anyways.
Like they're not negating the rest of it. They're just sort of, I think, to your point, I think they're just making their leaves.
Okay, um, does anybody have any question in regards to H thirty-nine thirty, home rule petition? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I will move to approve the revised act H three nine three zero home rule petition as presented.
Okay, did. Okay, do.
I do have a question. Okay, because it was approved at town meeting.
Yeah.
Do we approve at a town meeting with the change?
I don't believe so. That's a great question.
I don't believe the the town meeting approved the language of the bill. Town meeting approved the uh, the ability to allow these police officers to have this role. So my guess would be no. Because it didn't, but I think it's.
If I if I find out how I would, I would, I would.
We can approve it, but just double check.
I would, that's what I would ask, please, to that. And of course, being a legislature, they're like, can we get this uh, as soon as possible? And we'll try to get that. Yeah, that's a great question.
Okay. All right, would someone like to make a motion?
I already did.
You did, okay. Any other questions?
Well, sorry.
All those in favor? Thank you, Ben. Okay, we have um, maybe we have two contracts. Versus the um, collective bargaining agreement, the NEPA Police Union, the F Y twenty-four twenty-six.
Oh, so the two senior Mr. Chair, um. I appreciate the the board's cooperation and patience in in Stephanie and I working with the police union negotiating this new contract to start this, but we are for another two. Um, I really appreciate and commend the police union's patience and cooperation with my help and Stephanie, negotiability. Um, particularly their team, um, Sergeant Southern and Officer General. Um, those two gentlemen, um, really were very cooperative and very thoughtful. Uh, empathetic to uh, the town's business, um, and as we try to do the same with them as well. So. Uh, the 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 really the bottom line for the the takeaway, I would say, for this union um agreement is retention. So. The board has publicly commended the the police chief on his recruitment efforts, and this is sort of like the other side, the balance to the department. And I think it really does speak to that. Um. So I recommend that the board just approve this uh, union here.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion in regards to the collective bargaining agreement of police?
Move to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the New England Police Benevolance Association. Uh, locals fifty-four and fifty-five, the time of July one twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth twenty twenty-six. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Okay, um, just for the for the record, this was something that we've discussed at length in a executive session, and now it needs to be voted on in. Um, the open forum, so here we are to vote on it. And does anybody on the board have any questions or any comments to make in regards to this contract before we go on it? Having no, no hands raised? All those in favor? Thank you both.
Uh, members of board, the uh, internet is back up.
Oh, mine is, I can't get it back up. Go one at a time, kid. Working around the room, we don't have it. Mine is still, mine is still no internet secure.
I'm gonna restart again.
A couple restarts, okay. Um, so next up is the um. Contact B, Bobrick Engine, how do you pronounce it?
Over.
Bobrick, Bobrick Engineering, I call Wetlands Engineering Consulting Review Services. And would anybody like to make a motion if you want to come up here?
I'm assuming that this is uh, just another one to add on to the list that we have to choose. Various.
Julie, okay, yeah.
Uh, consulting uh, opportunities that we have. So it's nothing different from what we heard in the last meeting when we.
That's fair, but to just to kind of clarify, the board has been um. Looking at two types of contracts. One is for wetland and engineering consulting review services, you know, primarily serving the competition. But the other one, which is not mine, which is to serve the planning board for their reviews. Um, so so uh, Bobrick Engineering does a lot, and so um, this evening you happen to see him, or are you John?
Correct.
Wow, so this is John Bobrick. So, so uh, thank you for coming. Thank you. Um. And so they submitted um, a response to the question qualifications, and and Julie and and I looked at their submissions. And their qualifications, and they were qualified. It'll be a similar procedure. Um, and Julie clarified that it will be a similar procedure consideration as the planning board does, and then what, and do what peer reviewers perform, and work with that.
Yeah, so I think I just wanted to, I think there was some confusion on how we're choosing, uh, you know, the peer reviewers are just want to come here. Make sure that we are, we're clear. Uh, so for conservation is a little bit different from planning. Conservation is much more uh. Objective. So, you know, if we need wetlands flags reviewed, we need that wetlands. A lot of what uh, Bobrick and hearing is going to be doing is is there is a so. So uh, when we have those large shorewater designs come in, those are done by P E, so we need them to be reviewed by the earth professional and here. Um, so there's, there's much more um. Of a of a system there, um, and it's not as as objective, although, you know, we have three that in conservation, we don't have as many. From the uh, company that uh, applied, you need to contract you, uh, but they all have very different. Uh, so, you know, uh, John will be seeing more of the heavy civil engineering projects. And the E S E will be seeing more of those wetland projects where I need more of my help.
All right. Thanks for that.
Yes, it's it's confusing because I'm also on both sides. You see me a lot, and you're like, what's what are you talking about?
Okay, so do we have any? Other questions? Do we, do we need more?
I'll move to approve the contract with Bobrick Engineering on all wetlands and engineering consulting review services as presented, as presented, authorizing digital signatures.
Any further questions regarding to? Be. All those in favor? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks, Adam.
So now three out of five have internet access.
Chris, you're up.
Um, hopefully I'm up next, all right.
You have so.
We've got a, we've got a.
Um, now we're into um, item number eleven, special town election, November seventh. Great.
That's right, Chris, here. So um, the dentist, you can um, vote. On the warrant for next Tuesday's special town meeting is the first of two parts, uh, Thursday. About the legislature, which is the borders. Um, and the second part is the special life. So November seventh is the date as scheduled with the town clerk's office. Um, at the middle school, seven AM to eight PM. Um, this language for warrant was reviewed by town council. It's pretty broad, it's a relatively simple language. Um. And it's really just asking, you know, is the town willing to go over proposition two and a half? Is that it? Yes or no?
Will they be, um, is it? Do all elections have to have a mail-in component map? So will there, will there be a mail-in option for this?
There's mailing, all are they required? I don't, Paul.
But there, but there will be for this?
Yes.
Okay.
But I don't recall.
I just guess.
Uh, so the technical question. Um. Say in the, you know. Say the vote at town meeting fails.
Yeah.
And this election is called. Um, I'm thinking through the process because theoretically. Um, both have to pass in order to. But is it true that you can then move forward with the ballot election? And then call another town meeting? Say in a year.
Yeah.
Or six months or whenever to vote again. To get the town meeting approval, or does the whole thing, how how does that?
No, that's a great question. I I I thought about this, I believe we have discussed, I don't recall these type of answers, but there's a practical element, which is. The MSBA has already agreed in the project storm budget agreement that this level is fitted to say, this is the time. So to be in their timeline of funding scheme, it, they, like, we actually asked for an extension to this. So to in order to to make up and and really get an offset between the town election and town meeting. For this November seventh, so.
Well, it has to be within a certain number of days from the town election, I mean, from the town meeting vote.
I know, but in addition, in just like the the design phase that we're in.
Yes.
This is the the two gates, the town meeting, town election, these, you happen to be on the far end of how long MSBA is really allowing us to extend. These bloody study before losing, so. Um, so you're to your part. Can they, if if one were to vote, can you do the other one, can you do it again at the other time? Maybe, but this, that. I don't know if MSBA would allow us to even attempt again because we would be out of their pipeline. They didn't, wouldn't meet their time, right?
So if the vote fails next Tuesday, does this election get canceled?
Uh, that's a good question. I would. Think I would, I think I would probably see the advice of the school committee, see how they want to proceed. It's a good question.
Because I, you know, my sense is that it should go forward regardless, because I believe you can then have another town, special town meeting.
Yeah, that's true.
At some point.
Anyway, it would offer a couple of gesture of confidence to the MSBA, but I think. You would get, as you all know, I mean. The town will be the most important, will, at the meeting. So if I would be, just personally, I'm I'm expecting one to follow up, so. How many is, they're both two written, we think the people are showing up to the.
The election, the ballot election needs a simple majority. Which is easier to obtain in the voters than a two-thirds, which is required at town meeting, so.
Yeah.
So I'll move to approve the special town election warrant with the indicated date, time and occasion. It's Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three. From seven AM to eight PM, all four precincts have a file minimum score, free tiger drive, mayor. Authorizing digital features of the crew.
Second.
Any further comments? All in favor? Okay, one to item number twelve, the special town meeting.
Yep.
We just have. So she, the paper we've been given.
Sure, how you guys want to split it up. I I took a stab at it.
I mean, unless anybody objects, I'm fine with what you've given us. That, that's a, you know. Anybody have any objections to the way Greg um, broke out?
She's got two.
I do. Yeah, they're kind of related.
Yeah. Yeah. No, there, I mean, so this, well, you're going to get hurt, crap, and what I get, give you is uh, originally from the county, so he assigns. That the vote, you know, this is for the man. And and you're right, you put it there, they're going to be, but. I don't know, it, so we had our um, front meeting the other day, and um. They, you know, emphasizing that he really tries to make it as, as efficient as possible. So um, you know, there's a lot of super ballots. And then timely. But it's, he tries to kind of people blow them. Unfortunately, this time you can see there's. Yeah. I also chair, um. I mean, I took a, a stab at the script, if you will, um, and that's the board docs. And then um. Dick Downey has been updating the power presentation. And uh, and I. And and I just, you know, um you and it's it's in the box as well, the latest version.
Is that in the back of here?
Yeah.
Um what I would ask, given that I see now that I'm presenting the one fifteen Main Street easement, can we get a diagram of the property? Uh yes, part of the presentation, just to show. What the, where the easement would be and that way you sort of describe the fact this will allow access to the river.
For, yeah.
And it will make it relatively clear.
But actually, that is in there, but only since last night, so at last night's um finance committee. Meeting, which was the public hearing before. When she was asked, so you know, um we we ever use their imagination to look at.
You know, it's there, I see it, okay.
There, right, and so that that's your question, Dave, that really just we put that in over there.
Great, thank you.
I have a question about the uh increased collective demand fees, if memory serves me right, when we talked about this a while ago. The question came up as to how often the the fee is demanded. And do we have any sense of how frequently?
Alright, um does anybody else have any questions about the? Presentation of the articles at town meeting? Alright, I guess we'll move on to the um. F Y twenty-five budget.
Mr. Chair, um. The board had given some direction in this boss, you might. For the board's public table, so um. Bring it up there. So again, this just for public knowledge, um the town charter states. That a policy statement will be issued from the select board on or before the fifteenth day of November. So we're a little early, but I drafted one for the last meeting, or had a little bit of it, it is largely the same year by year. But I of course, or in, it is yours, so you can. Whatever you love to have it.
Honestly, I don't remember what the feedback was, that was, what? David, were you going to have feedback for?
Um I I did not hear at the uh, oh, yeah, 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 okay, so we're talking about the letter.
Yeah.
Yes, I uh, I'm satisfied with the way Greg changed the language, my my comment specifically was to um. The the language that was in the original one had something to do with, we are expecting an operational, you know. Struggle deficit, and I wanted that language removed.
Okay.
Thought it was best to remove it, and I think that Greg has done a good job at saying, you know, hey, we're in a tough situation.
Yeah.
And estimated revenues allow for sparingly little discretionary spending.
Yeah, actually.
And I'm curious, I'm struggling with the. I think.
That's real work.
Yeah, so I I'm fine with it.
But I understand your point absolutely, um like you don't want to be disingenuous to say that there's absolutely like. Yes, everyone should really be very. Justifiable, any any increases should should be very clear.
Okay, um. But yeah, I agree, I don't see a problem with the languages.
So the board would like you to approve it or else. Yeah.
I will make a motion to approve the policy statement for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. As presented.
Sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
We met on school building project, we haven't, I don't think we've met since we last met here, did we?
No, but um. But I mean, they've been busy, I saw it made at best, and then you said you you hosted, like, you went to something else today.
Uh on uh Sunday morning, there was a coffee morning, uh. Uh we kind of, we, and there were one thousand fifteen, twenty people present. It was busy the whole time.
Yeah, great.
And a lot of, I know Mary reported that there were a lot of people who she felt like she hadn't seen before. Uh stopping by, and so I I think it was, it was pretty accurate, yeah.
Yeah, so that I I think what you're seeing in for maybe against and more jobs. Yeah, you know, so the la- latest version of the school building committee, but um. Uh you know, I was kind of reluctant to say that it was, it was the final version to be incorporated into the overall. Um but I did reply to the O K M and Jerry Culver, the chair, today, saying, okay, we read by Friday. Absolutely that one, that I could have, that my man Greg can have.
Let me have forty-three slides.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that could be, you know, they talk about when you're doing presentations, they talk about a number of minutes.
I I specifically asked Jerry to cut the, okay, the presentation down, I warned you, Greg, the presentation, Jerry said, like, blacked in the cane. Made it best, they have they have a bridge for it, so.
Yeah.
Right, that's awesome.
I think the point was to be able to have additional slides available as questions came up.
I think I think the forty-three slides are going to go into a handout or something like that, so the presentation will be even better.
Yeah, I don't, I'm. Did he, did he say they've done with it?
I think it was still in draft form.
Yeah, I think, yes, I could, I, I hadn't, I hadn't heard or seen an email, the view was supposed to get an email with it, um.
Okay.
Right, we were supposed to get, we were supposed to receive an email when it was done, that's what it was going to be.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just getting, like, I just wanted to make sure that one.
Right, but I, but we haven't seen as a committee.
Okay.
The final draft of the presentation to be made on the floor at town meeting.
Certainly a different version.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, um.
Otherwise, um the chair, I thought it was a good, I think standard procedure for the pre-meeting meeting.
Yeah.
Uh it kind of goes through this very prescriptive, very radical, um everyone knows their part. Um I think the the change this year is because of schools, so we might, although last year we had prepared. Last, I think, last time, we had prepared for the use of the gymnasium, I don't think anyone actually uses the gymnasium, I might be wrong, but either way. Um this year, there's a greater expectation that the gymnasium may be used, um and then um. For poll hats, so the so the town clerk hosted training at the fire station on Monday. They get fifteen or sixteen people late election morning to show up. It's got to be good, but they've always encouraged the public to show up, you know, give yourself some time, show up, get walk through the registration line. Especially, I hope for the public, a little bit of grace, you know, we we hope that, I think, I think overall, it's a good idea, it's stepping right direction. But just want to make sure what Hunter says, it might be this extra cell.
Okay, um are we going to post a meeting for six thirty that night?
I wouldn't.
To the board, yeah, just in case.
Finance committee.
Right, yeah, just want, I just wanted to make sure we had that down. Um, okay.
We'll have to do it um by Thursday, it's late as well.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um. Any other questions about that, moving to committee project? Okay, on to correspondence, give a motion regarding the fourth one.
I'll move to accept the group correspondence, eight through eight.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the five correspondence? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. We have some minutes, I gotta. One set of minutes to accept.
I'll move to accept improved meeting minutes, September nineteen, twenty twenty-three, a show.
Second.
Any discussion about the minutes? All in favor? I'm going to tell the minister to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um. Man, this is success, I would say, what you said was, uh, over that, that was fun, um. I'm a little jealous that the porch buffs hadn't offered you better weather, but uh I thought I thought maybe it was a great turnout. Uh me and my little boy walked, gave names around, saw everybody, I really appreciate, of course, that, that was so supportive of that event. Uh love to see the booths from Public Works and the police and the fire. Uh particularly when I have a five-year-old boy who only wants to look at fire trucks and spray the hoses. Um I appreciate that, but otherwise, great turnout, a lot of board committees, nonprofits. Uh what's businesses that that represented and so forth, big commendation, big appreciation goes to Sarah Creasy at the chamber conference. Looking that, they do have a year, and uh one of my, one of my favorite parts on there. And then um. Today we host the staff cookout, thanks to Stephanie Dougan, um it was a lot of fun, I I appreciate it, the weather was. May act a little maybe on a warm side, but it was otherwise, it was perfect, and it was right at the back, we have a beautiful little, oh, like, pseudo park back here. Of the water, the river going and everything, it was wonderful, um. Yeah, Stephanie knocked it out of the park, uh everybody came through, firefighters came through, these officers came through, uh it was wonderful. And then uh, and of course, I really want to say, especially thank for Stephanie, but Kyle Rayner, uh Lucy DiSafano. Frank, and I forget Frank, but.
Right.
Oh, so uh, but he, yeah, so he's our, he also works for me, it's just great to have the support, uh everyone coming up there. Um I'm going to be out of town on this Friday, I think P T O for Friday. Um and then Monday is a holiday for the indigenous people's day, and then um y'all happen to see Laura, Laura Carter. Uh who is our new public health nurse, so she is um coming in um. Kind of like splitting time, if you will, between the town doctor and the major, she's um here in Maynard on Tuesday and Friday. But I want to point out to the public, yeah, the, there's, I think, there's pressure, but it's not a clinic, so it's. The expectation shouldn't be like, you show up for like first day and sort of that, it's that, it's it's really to address community by health, it's great, so. Um in the future, I expect to be really helpful in setting up um clinics, like vaccine clinics, you know, like it's uh, and maybe. It's sort of like, well, it's sort of a larger, larger role. Um so, so please, I hope no one thinks that you can show up and get your kid looked at, like she's done, not going to do that. Um but she'll she'll, she'll talk to everybody, very friendly, very reputable, I'm really appreciative of of. Um the hard work of Ivan uh Cogala, who's our health director. Um he put a lot of time and effort into making this happen, which was really uh sort of initiated by Megan's Muto when she was with us, now she's with Congress, so that was helpful. And uh, I'm glad to have more. And then um, I also want to point out, um really been impressed by the collaboration between the police department and the fire department. So in the in the town measures, there's a lot of candidates, so both for training internal, they they post external training. Which is great, like public training, and then they even got together um in front of the fire station for the nine eleven one one. Like I I've been really impressed with with the the chiefs really um putting their heads together, thinking about how those, how that team can work. But, you know, they've been doing it for for years, but this is more examples, it's just great to see it. And I think enough, so then we, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah. Um yeah, so just a couple things, one, I just congratulate the, you know, the um organizers and supporters and. People involved in Mania, in the porch fest, and also, um, you know, the the dark touchy intergroup for all that they do for Mania. Putting those events on, so thank you for that. Um the other thing, we we had a, we had a fireman, one of our firemen who actually stopped. In another town on his way home or to to or from, you know, somewhere it stopped. And and rendered assistance to somebody and basically from all accounts saved someone's life.
I agree.
And and in in town, so I I don't know if the, I just want to see what everyone else thinks. But I think it would be nice to, you know, get the information and then, you know, recognize that 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 person in some way.
Great.
As as a town. And then the other thing is, um I talked to Brian about this really today, I just, due to the temperatures in the room. Um our next meeting is the seventeenth.
Yeah.
And I cannot be there for that, I can be there next time, it was the twenty, if anybody has any objections to moving the meeting from the seventeenth to the eighteenth. And if they do, they do, we won't do it. Okay, it's just, it's, I I'll be in an airplane that night, so I will not be here, but I I wanted to be part of that meeting because I, it has the potential to be. A very important meeting, dependent upon the um outcome of town meeting. Special time meeting, so if anybody doesn't object. Over, they're changing that date.
Yeah.
I will have to attend remotely that day, but.
Okay, the Red Sox aren't playing, so we don't have that to worry about. Okay, so uh. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Uh we do, because we set the agenda.
Yeah.
I recommended you just to be.
Okay. Okay, I'll make the motion, make a motion to um change our next scheduled meeting date from Tuesday, October seventeenth. To Wednesday, October eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
Um on to the um rest of our reports. Jeff.
I'll I'll add my congratulations to everybody else to the organizers, Mayor Fats and Sarah Creasty, I got to talk to her for a while, actually before and after. Going into history a little bit, uh been having, though. Um and I think that everyone looking at the downpour on Friday, I think is very glad, I was there for some of the booth at eight AM, and I don't think there's a drop of rain. So I'll take over cash, whether if there's no water actually falling from the sky, so I think everyone was in a good mood. Uh really happy to talk to everybody from all the, all the town booths, uh connect school committee, I'm trying to school building committee. Um including the new school committee, uh the library, the other cultural council, fire, uh the uh. Uh the deputy for a while, Justin Mark was out there with the P P W, I got positive feedback on E P W groups in particular, which I think. Doesn't get as much visibility from the other groups, I think that's a very important venue, uh especially to them, um and so glad, glad to see them up with. Uh covering several topics um uh there, and the the group that was up there, I was in a group on Memorial Park, uh but the group that the. Cultural council had up there was rocking, so uh I was glad to have a nice night band up there, listen to, I I'm in my group with lots of art. Uh congratulations, and and well done to everybody who helped organize that, I think I met our food inspector too. Um and then I will hopefully be up here to attend porch bets the next day, whether it was fantastic for that, and that was a lot of fun for the. Free portions, I was able to make it too, so, so we grab music, so well done, also during that. Uh that is it for me.
Okay, just use.
I just had a couple questions left, um the first is. Could you possibly register me for the MMA conference and the win more lunch?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, um medicine open today, I think.
The January?
Yes.
What are the dates?
Nineteen, I think.
Usually it's right around. Mount Cay Day, it's definitely.
It is the, yeah, it's the nineteen. Eighteen, eighteen, yeah. Nineteen, yeah. Um so I actually had occasion to attend the um women elected municipal official. Uh training last week where former acting governor James Swift spoke. Um and also Harley Ritter, I think is her name, Cal Ritter. Um and that was actually, it was a great few hours I was able to to go and, you know, talk to some peers and. Uh it was interesting, I met someone from, I met people from the town of Royalston. And they have a three-member board and no town administrator or town manager, so the chair basically runs. Twelve hundred people.
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh so it was very, it was very interesting to talk about, but again, similar, you know, is, everyone has similar. Problems, questions, concerns, you know, it all kind of feels the same.
A big space with very few people, Royalston.
Yeah. Um the other question I had was, um I saw something online, uh Glenn Pointe had had done a article, I think about the warrant.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to reconfirm that we did actually send the action limit to, because we do pay. And that's for everybody listening at home, anyone who's the after the fact, we understand and recognize the fact that action limit does not go from every. Household in town on a regular basis, but um right now, it's almost the best we can do, so what we do is we actually. Right now, it's almost the best we can do, so what we do is we actually, the three. Times when we put it in the warrant, we have it sent, we pay extra money to have it sent to every household in town.
That's right.
So we want to ensure that everybody has access to the warrant, so, um, so I just wanted to make that clear, that I did see that. Yeah, okay.
And I shot an email, so Greg actually personally told me about, uh, you can see comics. Blog posts, and then I shot up an email over, um, that could a little bit interesting, but you.
Yeah.
Check, because I, I don't want to, uh. We want to make sure.
I did get my.
There you go.
Yeah, um, Mike's comment earlier this evening, uh, relative to concerns about. Uh, infrastructure and climate change, got some thinking. About, um, we have a limited number of dams. In our community, and, and one of the issues that Leamster faced was, was the failure of the dam. Um. Do we know? And I know the state does, uh, annual, if not, uh. Biannual reviews of the status of dams.
Yeah.
All around. Do we know, first off, who owns, like, the Ben Smith Dam, is that town owned? Uh, and if not, who owns it, and has it been? Has it been studied as to its structural integrity? Um. Several years ago, this goes back maybe now twelve years ago, we came devastatingly close. To, uh, we actually declared a state of emergency, in case we needed to, uh, call ends for state aid.
Yes.
Uh, the river down near John's Cleaners.
Oh, yeah.
So high.
Yeah.
That we had an inch to spare, it would have caught onto the bridge, and then it also would have gone up over the edge on the side, and. The way that downtown is, Main Street would have flooded, and it would have just. It, it would have been unstoppable, we would not have been able to control the flood that came, so we were very, very close.
Yeah.
And it was a very similar, it was, it was actually in springtime, following a heavy snowy year. Um, so we need to be prepared for, you know, with the weather conditions that we've been having, et cetera.
It was, it was a discussion, I don't remember that particular issue, but it was a consideration in the original municipal program that we did. Identify like what, what the rising sea levels, etc.
Yeah.
In this building, we're on the river.
Right.
So, um.
That is great.
So.
So it might be a good idea to do, to suggest, and I'm not, I'm not saying that they have to do it, but. Sometimes with the collaboration of fire and police, right, um, that. I, I know other towns do tabletop exercises on how to respond to emergencies.
So, uh, I will inform you as well, that incidentally, we just did a tabletop exercise, and, um, so the fire. Is the, as the party had been, the, the emergency management director, she invited. Viva.
Yeah.
Uh, the messages emergency management agency to come and host table coverage, but. The context of that exercise was hurting, um.
Yeah. That's them.
Yes, and so. The administration, okay, what if, what if the dam break, where, where, where do we go, so.
Right.
Justin Marco had to say, okay, well, that, if this dam breaks, if that thing, it could impact this bridge, the shaft bridge, and then how do we round people up, and we evacuate it? It, it was, anyway, so it all very coincidentally pertinent inside, um. That is concerning, that bridge next to that dam. Is. It's, I mean.
Is that gonna be replaced?
It has to be, because it's gotta be.
Yeah, I thought that was the one that when, uh.
It's not the next one.
When representative, um. Our prior representative was here for some event, he got the cat out of the bag, that bridge was gonna be replaced.
That one, she, you're, you're, that's a progress woman, uh.
Trahan.
That was Trahan.
She was talking about, um, Main Street, next to where that high water.
Okay.
Was.
Okay.
So, so Jimmy McDonald's doing all that work.
Right.
He should be putting in the retain wall, hopefully. And then, um, and then, and then we gotta reverse that bridge.
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
Cause that was the area that was, uh, in danger of flooding.
But I, I know.
Fifteen years.
The bridge at the dam is also, I don't know.
Yeah, and the bridge, the bridge has that arch, and water at that time was like this close to. To. And once it hits the bridge, it goes sideways, and it would have blown right down.
So it's good questions, I think, again, I, I, we may already have the answer because the municipal program, after mitigation program, or the situation.
Yeah.
I guess it's, it's an interesting question, though, that, that David asked, who owns the dam?
Yeah, I just pulled up a study that, um, the Corps of Engineers, two thousand and eight, apparently, the owners of the power plant owned the dam well as.
They own it, they own a dam over near their location, which is often like.
Long range of Ben Smith.
Ben Smith damn they own.
Would make sense going back to the history of why you had them in there in the first place.
Yeah, it's controlling, because they have that pulvert that goes down next to the, uh. Essentially next to the rail trail, that. But that, that'd be the mill pond. So if the thing overflows up there, that would flood down into the mill pond, which would then flood, and, you know, then we'd also have the problem downtown.
So. No, it's a.
The Ben Smith Dam is an important. Cog.
Absolutely, it was built in eighteen seventy, part of the woodmill. It is in fair condition as of two thousand and eight, and it is the largest dam on the Antigua River.
Yeah, and there's, there's another one down in. Uh, right over. Fair in two thousand and eight.
Yeah, but.
I think if I was in fact condition, I might have.
Yeah, I wasn't faking it, it's in two thousand and eight, exactly. Anything else, David?
No, I'm good.
Mike?
Um, well, just to, to reinforce David's concern, that was kind of behind my motivation for, for concluding that in the goal. As of litigation. Um, is, is extremely important. Say, we gotta look around other towns. Uh, not just around the world, but even within, you know, fifty miles of us, that experience, yeah, so I think that. That's really important. And I know the sustainability, um. We are coming together with, with, they're gonna present recommendations for us to look at. Um. In the context of the hazard litigation plan, N B B, uh, programs, and so forth, I, I think that, that's coming down the pipeline pretty soon. Yeah, and, and again, just to, uh, very briefly follow on from others who have already commented on the, um. The main event fest, I think it's a wonderful community event. And then, again, going back to our goals, one of our goals is to, I believe, to enhance community involvement. Um, it would be nice to be able to get everybody thoroughly interested in the municipal affairs of the town, that, that. Um, but even just a flavor of. Uh, you know, adding to a strong sense of community is, is something that, that shouldn't be taken for granted, and it's great to see a. Festival like that be so successful. So again, thank you to all those who, who were behind putting that together.
Well, thank you. Alright, um, so our next meeting is, thank you, you guys, the eighteenth. Um, and then we, we will be posted for the, um, night of our meeting, special time meeting for six thirty.
Are you gonna put out a reversal? Tomorrow, oh, thank you.
Alright.
I will motion to.
Second.
All in favor? But, Jen, thank you all, have a good night.